And I am starting our broadcast and I'll look to our audience and see if our.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the planning board meeting for March 6th. I'll begin by calling the roll. Alden Clark?
Here.
Chris Delisle is not here. Bob Coop?
Here.
Jamie Pennington?
Here.
Heather Rogers is not here. Rick Tainer? Yes. Charlie Tomassano?
Here.
Jen Houston?
Here.
Brian Gump? Yes.
Brian, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Great, thank you. Thanks.
Okay. There you go. So. The first item on the agenda is a blue and not required plan for two Marshview Way and 502 Merrimack Street. What do we have for that?
Okay, so. We have a. CA, yes, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm curious if CA, listed as CA, yes, is our person speaking to this particular application. We understood there was going to be someone here to see maybe, I don't know if that's the case. Hand raised, so.
Yes, hello?
Yeah, Preston?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, it wasn't exactly clear. Go right ahead if you'd like.
Yeah, my name is Preston Brown. I'm with Millennium Engineering and I'll be here representing this parcel conveyance for Mr. Abananti and Mr. Range.
Would you mind just explaining briefly what's happening for the board?
Mr. Range is. Is. Going to be conveying parcel A. To Mr. Abananti, which is at 502 Merrimack. So that this is deemed a conveyance, not a not buildable parcel.
And as I understand it, the purpose is to address the shed that's excited over the lot line?
That's that's a portion of it that Mr. Range knew that Mr. Abananti has young children. And they use that land back there to play. And he offered the property to him.
Thank you.
Any board members have any questions about this?
Actually, I just have one question. On one of the slides, it showed the. It had some definition on the lot. Of the Marshview Way. And it said that the lot line along the sort of the northwest side, it had both the front and side designation when it was doing. Doing setbacks in one of the, one of this, this slides that was, I just wanted. I don't have an issue with the, with the parcel or conveyance, but I just wondered.
Are you referring to this plan either?
It was, it was one of these, it was one on the additional slides that was this map, but it had marked up the setbacks.
Hang on just one moment. I apologize. I was just going to do another.
It was one of the ones that was submitted with that. It was like the third, third one down under files, maybe?
It's the next one.
Yeah, I just, I just was curious to explain, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And along that cul-de-sac, it says side and then front describing the lot. I just didn't understand that.
Could you hear the question from member Clark? Would you mind addressing that? If not, we could repeat it.
I believe that was addressed from. Yes, this was marked up from somebody from the zoning.
The Office of Planning and Development was helping to provide notation relative to setbacks that we're referring to?
Yes, yes.
So I need to think that the issue is that the section, I was wondering why. The parcel was drawn in such an odd way to go down narrow strip going down Marshview. And I think what's happened is the curved line and a portion of the straight line up to the cul-de-sac is considered the front lot line.
True.
And so this was just kind of clarifying. That anything that was the front lot, and anything beyond the tangent of the cul-de-sac becomes a sideline.
Correct. That, given the way that new reward and zoning works in this, say, unusual situation or configuration, notation to basically clarify that component of it. I did actually, I might have pulled up, I have the. Just the aerial of that area, just for folks who like a little more. Areas that we're referring to, there's a larger lot here, but this area is what we're trying to decide, so. Anyway.
Yeah, so I had, I actually had the same question that Alden did, but seeing that, I had, she had noticed that, that sketch with the lot, with the dimensions on it, that actually helps quite a bit.
We'll work with applicants as much as possible to clarify some of those things in the future as well.
I did have another question though, which is. What is to the, the, the right of. Which I guess must be private subdivision line?
That's what I'm saying.
What is the parcel that is, or is it, is it all, is the right way entirely within the adjacent block to the west?
Oh, I believe that's the case. I don't know that the essential map shows all of it.
There we go.
And of course, we don't necessarily rely on these maps for everything, but you can see that that's.
Anybody else have any questions? And.
I mean, yeah, I guess I'm just assuming that the frontage. Of the rear parcel is sufficient, right? That you've already checked.
Well, that's, that's so, let's read, basically in general, we're not going to pass the applicant onto the board. We're going to circle back to the applicant and tell them, we see somebody that either the length of the frontage isn't enough, and this is probably a notation. But if we find that they don't have the length required by the ordinance, or the frontage is illusory, meaning it doesn't, you physically can't get across it for some reason, like there's a guardrail, a masthead, or a steep topography or something like that. That would be a problem. We would circle back to the applicant and essentially try to resolve that issue and work out to the board. So, and we could also flag if we had, are concerned about it, we'll be, because that will work. So in this case, the office right in the door, but you intend to see a fair amount of these ADRs are actually just yard swapping type things. So.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? So if you have a motion to. Approve the, I'm sorry, motion to endorse. The approved and required plan.
Motion to endorse.
Andy, is that the second motion to endorse?
Yes, correct, thank you.
Charlie's motion?
Motion to endorse, okay.
And unfortunately, we need to have a roll call. So. Walden Clark?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jamie Pennington?
Yes.
Charlie Tomassano?
Yes.
This is my special permission, that need you, Jim, and I vote yes. So it's. Okay, the next item on the agenda. General business, a request for minor modification at 26 Duffy Drive.
I'm Steven Moll, my wife Paula.
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Yeah. I'm Steven Moll, my wife Paula, we live in 26 Duffy Drive, we've been there just under four years. And we simply just wanted to put a shed up in our backyard. And. That's, that's the whole story. I submitted like a plot plan, that thing that's over there now and where the, where the shed would be. I've also, it's an eight by 14 shed. I even got the letters from Artua Butters saying they don't really care. And that's pretty much the story.
Did you submit the letters to the Butters owners?
No, I, well, we didn't.
Did you give them the plan or to this? Thank you. So the. The planning department has said that this is within the limitations for the special permit for the. Open space residential development. And that there is no. That the shed will be raised above the ground, so water will flow through. And. I think there is no. No zoning issues, right? No zoning, no zoning issues and no issues with the special permits deck?
Correct. Under the permit, there was a small latitude left for some expansions of footprints essentially in each of the lots. And then that's spelled out with essentially a table and a map, and this is where that map, that colorblind map got to come from. But in essence, Steve's only administered with the term that they had done exceeded the threshold that's allowed it for each lot. And so obviously, that's then what it made it great to for the board for modification.
Any questions for?
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question, okay.
Yeah. The plot, the, the line between 25 and 26. The letters have put a wall on their, on their side. Are you mean 24?
25.
25 is the one above.
Lot 25 and 26.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Anyway, they've got a wall up within running a foot or two or so of the plot line. And our shed is going to go pretty much on the other side of that wall. And I just wanted to know, is it necessary that it be six feet, the back be six feet from the, the line?
From the lot line, yes.
Okay, yeah, not a big deal, it's being our backyard, anyway.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, in that case, I will. Call for a motion. None of, I just wanted. Highlighted none of the things we have, the jetted night, a couple of areas, we're all just general business time, so. We can just quickly go through this, so. And. Actually, Andy, do we need to actually do a roll call? Because. Brian was not voting.
I don't know if it applies, technically there, given that he's not voting, but technically, I would do it. Because for all motions that you have any legal effect, you definitely have to do it. So I would just, for, I'm just, I can break it down.
That's fine. Okay, I would accept a motion to approve, to determine, just to determine that the modification is minor and then to grant the minor modification.
Correct. And, and I, by the way, I should clarify my earlier comment. I think part of the reason for having those roll calls is to make sure that there's clear clarity for both the persons who are both in here and also the audience that's doing the motions. So, anyway, probably another reason.
Okay, so motion, please.
I'll move to even minor and to approve.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, so here's the roll call. Alden Clark?
Yes.
Bob Coop?
Yeah.
Jamie Pennington?
Yes.
Charlie Tomassano?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just so I understand that procedure, why, so why do you do the roll call again? Oh, excuse me, one last thing. Do I get something official from you guys?
Yes, you're going to get a certificate, it'll come out of our office back to you, that will clarify that this has been approved.
Okay, when can I expect that?
Maybe this week, everything?
Fine, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, the, so this is a secondary roll call.
Why, I just had to carry on.
I'm not sure when you say secondary.
Well, we did it for each motion. For each motion you have to do.
For each motion you have to do a roll call. Yeah, so even though you've done like a roll call for attendance, you do a motion for, well, there's a motion for that. Each one has to be.
If we're not.
When there are members.
If we're all in the room, we don't need more.
Oh, I. Right. It may not be apparent to everybody who's.
Okay, our third item of general business is a request for minor modification for three Boston Way.
So, and some, I will probably speak to that. We were not necessarily expecting the applicant to be here this evening. The project is three Boston Way. They had actually, relatively speaking, minor change to grade, and was actually already here, approved by the Conservation Commission. In the, it had to be a six total order and grading on the site. Doesn't really have any substance of effect on the project, but in essence, while we were expecting, we, as you may recall, we usually have prescriptions in the boards with the link there in the year. Review projects and make sure that they can work from a small modern management perspective in particular. In this case, he reviewed the project originally, so he looked at the change here just to make sure it was consistent. Yeah, incidentally, the Conservation Commission, although they had already approved it, they had determined based on what we were reviewing at the time, that they didn't have any further questions, they were good approving it. They, although we typically will, when a project before both the planning board and the Conservation Commission, we will both use the same consultant, so we're not, you know, overlapping and having conflicting opinions and all that. But in this particular instance, they didn't really need to have it run by Phil, if other was sufficient based on the plan itself. Phil had a couple of questions, like, we just want to make sure the soil, you know, right and so forth. So at any rate, my, our suggestion here, I guess, some is that it doesn't have a substantial impact, just continues matter to the next agenda mainly so that those questions can be answered. And again, I'll write all that leave to the board, but for a typical part of all, we'd like to make sure generally that the consulting engineer is good, but you know what's being proposed, we're going to prove. I don't necessarily see any issues with being proposed here. But given that he is our consultant for small water management, all these questions should be recently answered by the, and I don't think it'd be an issue for the consultants to be able to do that. But my suggestion is we just carry this over to the next agenda, and if it's all been closed, questions being answered, Phil can verify to you that he doesn't think it has any impact on small water management or anything else that the board was looking for.
Do we need a motion to carry it forward?
You don't need one. It's okay with you, I'll just bring it over.
Okay. Unless anybody has concerns, concerns, questions. Okay, next item is the rule of minutes of the February 7th meeting. I sent Kevin some edits just before the meeting. Did anybody else have any edits we said? If there is, if there's a bill. Questions about that, then we could move to a motion on approving the February 7th.
So, moving through the minutes with amendments?
Second? Somebody for your second?
Sure.
Well, okay, great, thank you. Okay, well, for the roll call, Alden Clark?
Yes.
Bob Coop?
Yes.
Jamie Pennington?
Yes.
Charlie Tomassano?
Yes.
I actually haven't checked to see, was he, were you here, Janet? And Brian?
I wasn't in attendance on that, on that day.
Neither was I.
Oh, you weren't?
No.
So you can't.
Right. Just realized that. It does have an occasion.
And it's sort of been a circuit. Okay, so now we are on to the zoning discussion, I think. Yes.
Okay with the chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So again, for the record, I guess, any board director playing in development. I had some slides that I provided to, presented to the city council, we, as Rick goes, and actually, the folks in the audience who were there. We spent about two hours going over these slides, so I'm not giving the whole slide deck presentation, I'm more than happy to cover more ground if you want. But I think the, the main intent of the night, I guess, I'll just keep reminding you, and obviously with the chair and others. My goal here is to try to get as much feedback as possible in the coming days, in the coming weeks, in the coming months. From city council members, planning board members, the general public, et cetera. So we have different ways of doing that. For instance, I'd like to have an informational session later this month for the larger public. But at any rate, the, I should also mention, the city council has. Through its planning and development committee, which focuses on areas like this, and you know, you have, our public areas that are not filling. They have decided to carry on their regular agenda every couple of weeks, this item, so we could revisit where we are, talk about new material, new pieces of this, and get additional feedback from everybody. As you can imagine, you know, having council consensus over zoning amendment is important. So trying to get feedback in a bunch of different ways, but one of them here is that our actual planning meetings, and so I'm happy to carry this on our agenda, essentially, if the chair kind of tried to carry to check in on these things. But in essence, I'm not going to go through all the background I went through with everyone else, but. A couple of quick mentions, one is. That I don't have, partly speaking in the way that I view the city based on the city master plan and the land use banner. But I think in essence, you know, this map does not note, unfortunately, it doesn't note the large historic area we have in the city, that's, you know, it's sort of originally built out. But that is a very important portion of the city. The downtown is located right at the heart of that. And what I'm trying to illustrate on this is just that we have, outside of that larger historic block. We have three potential village nodes, so to speak, as I would call them. One is the downtown, obviously. In recent years, with, especially with the Smart Grove District, we've seen some changes happening in that area, and that's another opportunity. Both for the city and here, in the context of the state, to have more transit oriented development, multi-family housing, support for transit and vice versa. And so I call that out as a second, second sort of village node. But the reason that the yellow area is highlighted is because, well, we may not necessarily all think of that as a village node. You know, it can be perhaps a more, newer report like village node in the future. So, you know, there are different ways of looking at all this, but in essence, there are a couple of things going on. One is, we applied to the state for a grant last year and were approved to look at, with some consultant assistance, to look at rezoning, the Story Avenue area, and what they're kind of contemplating the idea of, could this be something better than it is today? And if so, will it be? And part of that is possibly introduction of, of some residential and having more mixed use, having, say, less of the dominant parking lots, you know, it's sort of in your face all the time. Perhaps you could sort of hide the parking behind, you know, residential, you know, it's above shops, and so it doesn't necessarily have to be exactly as it is today. So I'm talking about, you know, smart growth, tourism, those kind of concepts, right? I'm just glancing on that. But that is the village node of the area of the city that, that part of it is focused on. The primary focus, I would say, in terms of like the, the next couple of weeks and months for us, and sort of an intense discussion is relative to a state requirement that came from a piece of legislation. And it trades, it requires in essence, some, some higher density, multi-family housing allowed as a right, that's important. And essentially, you can close proximity to transit, and this is because we're a MBK community. So in essence, we have, I guess in some, well, we could talk about other areas of the city. I think in large part, we're really talking about. One, what can we do to change and improve Story Avenue? What would that potential village center area look like? It's never going to be downtown or the Smart Grove District, it's a, you know, it's a different area. But it could be something more than it is today, and, and, you know, for instance, feel like you're arriving in Newburyport as opposed to strip mall anywhere. Having said that, we have also to, as a mandate by the state, by the end of the year, we have to allow as a right, a certain component, and I'll get that in a second, of multi-family housing as a right. And so there's a couple of parameters specifically about that, I have in a slide. But we have, I would guess in some, two obvious choices. One is to look at the 40R district, and we worked on this a number of times, from our guys right within the, the audit area, he had worked on that with me some years back. This was adopted by the city council some years ago, and we have seen in recent years, the one in three Boston Way projects built. And we have seen the Haley's site approved as a third 40R project, but not yet constructed. This was done a couple of years ago, but in, in, in concept, this provides a lot of ground to already to beat the state requirement using that district. So just general context there. I'm not going through a bunch of other slides, I went with others, and what I'm happy to do that, and these slides are posted, I'm happy to distribute them with their post on the website. I don't like going into all the planning concepts, but, but the state is looking to kind of diversify the type of housing that's available. There's a lot of, not so much in Newburyport, that's why this green call on this year. But around the rest of the Commonwealth, including around the Boston area, a lot of communities have single family, large lot zoning. And so it does, it consumes a lot of land, it doesn't provide a lot of housing variety. So in essence, we're looking for, for the state and for the city, some variety in that housing. And I mentioned that mainly because of the mandate. I'm not going to go over this in great detail, but I am going to mention briefly just a couple of. This was more of a discussion, I think, with the council, I'm happy to elaborate on it. But in essence, there are a couple of state statutes that are relevant here, and, and they're, they're important from my perspective as a player, I'm happy to go and link it about them. But the zoning act itself is not really enabling, the act is essentially setting some parameters. The, the city already has the general police powers, a rule to establish zoning, and the zoning is defining, you know, certain limitations on that. But the zoning act is mass general laws, chapter 40A. Another relevant statute, although it's not, you wouldn't, not, not everybody would necessarily think of this particular statute here. We might think of, you know, the current reference of the MBK communities requirements and 40A, which is the section that it was inserted into. But comprehensive permits, I mentioned that here because another state statute. There are a bunch of overlaid state statutes, and they sometimes seemingly sort of conflict with each other or provide different sort of endpoints. And they're all attempting to get to things like, you know, housing and development patterns and whatnot, but they may not always be, they sometimes feel like they're disjointed. So I'm pointing out here in essence that, well, I think there are also a lot of roles that there's a little bit of. Interesting results here from having these overlays, and, and here I'm pointing out more so for Newburyport interest. So comprehensive permits, this is a section of another, of another section under 40B. But it, it essentially allows a developer in essence to come in and say, I want to override your local zoning, have a denser housing development, because your local zoning isn't working for me. And the state provides basically a release valve if, and then this is the, the if, is if the requests for, you know, exemptions essentially from whatever those parameters may be, dimensional requirements, you know, setbacks, partner requirements, things like that. If they're relatively reasonable, and, you know, that's sort of a public health or safety issue or something significant. They can get exceptions from those rules through a comprehensive local permit, and it's going to replace with all local permits that might be required under zoning, through the CBA openly. And so that comprehensive permit, in essence, gives someone a path to, if they were to close a project, that might not be otherwise allowed under the local zoning. And we could debate it, like, you know, the pros and cons, and, you know, what that's a bit, you've got a good statute, or result of this for that. But it was intended to try to, you know, encourage some affordable housing, also get communities to pay attention to their thresholds, and try to encourage for others owning each other own, you know, with a rule, get to more affordable housing. So the state had, underneath that particular statute, set a threshold of, if you are a community that has 10% of your annual, or your, sorry, census, you know, your, your annual housing count is per the census counts. Of your total housing units, and 10% of those units are deemed affordable, meaning they meet certain requirements or affordability according to the state. And there, there are some, you know, cadence limitations, but other terms are counted. But in essence, if you have 10% of the units in the community, and we're sort of at that, sort of hovering around that 10% threshold right now. And then we should note here that the state is going to start using the new census numbers, they haven't quite rolled out the 2020, you would think, but I don't think that happens yet. So at any rate, that will take effect there, and then we'll adjust our, our ratio. But in essence, that 10% threshold is that, is that threshold at which the board could say, we have 10% already, you've heard your project, and we're not keen on, for whatever reason, we think there's a problem with this project. And we're not willing to approve this project, and essentially that can be upheld. If the community is under 10%, there's a chance that that could be, you know, the board's decision to deny a project unreasonably could be overturned. And, and I'm just summarizing, you know, glancing around the surface of this, but just, you have to understand this, I think, just at least briefly. Because there, there was a different set of thresholds in some of these statutes for the affordability requirement. So here, under the 40B statute, the assumption is, if you don't have 10%, you know, there's a potential release valve there for it over. In that case, they have to create the project itself, have to have 25% of the units affordable, so they're going up to, well, maybe 25% in doing it. But they can have a greater density, right? So that we can see what the impact might be on our community by a project. And keep in mind, this could be anywhere in the community, if it doesn't, you know, think of the neighbors you're concerned about, it could be there. So at any rate, that is a statute, you know, I think, you know. Well-intending, but maybe not producing necessarily, you know, breakers all the time, you know, I think. So it's a little bit convoluted because it mixes with these other thresholds. So the other thing that happened in recent years was the state said, if you don't have 10%, but you're at least trying to make progress as a community, and you can demonstrate you're making 0.5% of those units per year. By approving a project, right? You know, say it's part of a business project, which is doing, for instance. We can have that, what we call safe harbor status, that the safe harbor status is where that board, the CBA can say, no, we thank you for your application, but we're, we're not comfortable with this project, and essentially, they have to be upheld. But there are plenty of communities that aren't really at these thresholds, right? And in a certain sort of, they're going to get to these thresholds. So the sum result here is that we've made significant ground in recent years, under this particular section. This is partially the creation of affordable, actually de-restricted affordable units in the smart, in the units. And partly, this very fine range detail, but it's worth noting, is in the Smart Grove District. We consciously at the time decided under the 40R statute, which is everyone I'm mentioning here. And I apologize, this is very convoluted and confusing, perhaps, for those of you who don't do it all the time, but it's actually important to understand, this is part of what's actually worth noting, is this sort of overlap. Is in 40R, we chose consciously to go from 20% to 25% in that district. So, okay, that's actually for two reasons. One is, you're not only getting, let's say, if it was the Minko project at Haley's, it's about 100 units, and say it's just under, let's say it's 100 units. If you were doing 100 units and a developer comes in and says, I want to do a project under the 40R Smart Grove District, it's streamlined, I'm not going to do a comprehensive permit, I'm going to do the 40R Smart Grove District, per local zoning, per some other, you know, statutory constraints. But it's, it's streamlined permitting with some designer, which is what we have, streamlined permitting, multi-family housing, some other uses, but with designer. They do a project under that permit, we chose, although the state required you have to do 20%, so we decided voluntarily to go up to 25%. And we did that for two reasons. One, you'd only get five more units in a 100 unit project, it might be affordable. But we also knew, and this is the weird sort of twist of the regulations, but you can, when the other 75% of those units in the project, they are not technically affordable. The state has been encouraging rental units. So if the project is rental, which in this case, Minko the project has far have been rented, that's what they tend to hold you on. Because those projects have been rented, we have actually been given credit on the city's subsized housing inventory, which is this ten percent threshold we're trying to give you, right? Um, we have been given credit for all a hundred of the units in those buildings, even though technically, according to the the portability constraints, only twenty five percent of them are being that threshold of what it costs. So it's worth noting here only because, well, we always try to do zoning comprehensively. We, I think we have to be cognizant here that there's some, um, there's some pieces of this legislation, one in particular I didn't think issue with, which is that the state has precluded us from doing in these MBTA compliant districts we have to do. They've essentially precluded us from ever doing the twenty five percent we've been doing in the smart growth district today. So, um, while we are able to essentially keep our grandfather, so to speak, district, that's what their guidelines allow. Uh, and some of these are, uh, rules are established by the state legislature, a very limited, uh, portion of the rules. Much of it is established actually by the, uh, the state department. It's not, it used to be the Department of Housing Community Development, if I don't know, the HCD. It's now the Executive Office of Housing and Local Communities, uh, a little longer. And and they have a set of guidelines that flushes that out. The legislature give them some guidelines that are some latitude to determine from there what revival parameters, and so some of that comes from there. In essence, um, yes.
Does that count static? Meaning it's going to, we can use that count going forward or do we have to grow the amount of affordable units over time?
Uh, so for instance, if you reach that ten percent, you know, you're good, right? Um, but since the new census numbers being used, are if the ratios, the newer denominator, our ratio is going to drop and we're going to be below. Right? So that's kind of what we're in. And so I guess I would say in general, because, uh, that, you know, again, it it also depends on the census counts and the states are rolling over there to use those numbers. But in essence, it's a moving target to a degree, unless we can kind of maintain, you know, reliance upon being above that threshold, either in the ten percent or the point five percent per year. Um, and this assumes, by the way, that there are no other changes in the regulation, this is sort of the framework and landscape we have. Um, I don't want to go at length necessarily over all this, but I do think you have to have this general context. Um, because it's, it points out here why this market district has been good for the city, if nothing else, in light of MBTA communities. Um, and it points out also the contract where MBTA communities actually says you can only go up to twenty percent maximum. It does not allow communities, the the rule don't allow us to go up to twenty five percent. So, um, you know, again, I was, this might be, that seemed a little bit, you know, sort of contradictory in a way because you think of the advocacy versus higher percentages. Um, and the state is allowing us to grandfather our district and do that, but we will not be able to, uh, and this is, so as we're getting feedback, we really don't want to do. Um, we have different options to conserve what they win and that sort of thing. But in essence, we will not be able to meet the state requirement if we want to do a twenty five percent, uh, of a housing requirement in that area. So that would be, we have to do that in a different area. So, so.
So it's the evidence.
Uh, if we wanted to maintain a twenty five percent affordability requirement, outside, I'm talking, it's separate from our forty R district today. Or a modification of that could potentially expand that district, they could do allow that. But outside of that district, if we're going to comply with MBTA communities with some other area, we will not be able to do twenty five percent in that area under this program.
I have a question about. I I, um, about how the, how the capacity is calculated in certain different situations. So as I understand, and we talked about this earlier, um, there are some parcels within the forty R district that have no capacity because they're substantially developed.
Yes.
Under forty R rules, but they would be, they would have capacity under MBTA community rules. So in order to count them, we have to move them out of the forty R district and create and create a new MBTA district here? Because as long as they're in the forty R district, we can't count them, right?
Uh, I'm not trying to draw that last part of that.
So, so if if there's, there are two types of zoning of overlay districts.
Yes.
For our purposes.
Yes.
The forty R district and the MBTA district.
Yes.
Parcel A has no capacity in the forty R district where it is right now.
Yeah.
It would have capacity if it were in the MB, MBTA district.
For compliance, I mean.
For for compliance with MBTA.
Yeah.
Can't, we can't designate that, we can't overlay the MBTA on the forty R and create capacity if it's in the forty R and has the capacity.
Um, and and I, this might go to a little bit of conversation we had earlier today. I think I, I guess if I understand it correctly, and I do, perhaps one thing I can illustrate by help of it is, um, the, there's a whole table I had to give to the state, you know, this year ago, we're giving the smart growth district. This is actually like a whole left by seventeen table, but, um, to illustrate, for example, and I don't know if this gets to it.
This is, this is the question I asked, right? Yeah, so for the parts you've got in yellow.
Yeah, so just to illustrate, I just briefly, so everybody can kind of orient themselves, replay this on a point two and something that hopefully you're getting, we're getting it. Um, uh, sorry, give me one second, I'm trying to pull the smart growth district map. Um, so, okay, so our smart growth district map, sorry for all the standing. Um, so this is just a globe of the district around the the train station there. This is, um, it's not on my map, this is one that I created when we made the district. But, um, you'll notice here, you don't see one in three blocks away, this is what the parking lot used to be here, actually, it's the old area, so we ignore that. Um, but in essence, I I'm going to point out here that in this zoning district, and this is, so this goes to the the different, uh, statutory structure and how those are calculated. So in the forty R program, when we did this, the state, when they calculating build out of the district and giving us credit, and also goes to getting payments. We got incentive payments for doing it. They would not give us credit for areas that they did not think would be viable, leave redeveloped, at least on the near term. So they were basically saying, for instance, this is one area where we have like an office park or business. Uh, they're saying, we're not going to give any credit for that because we don't think anything is going to happen with it. Whereas they would give us credit for some of these other pieces that seem like they were low hanging proof, like that happened, right? So if you have a bunch of condos and, you know, high density development, who's going to tear all that down? Who's going to buy a lot of condos and, you know, change it? So, um, from a policy perspective, if you're trying to get the housing, you would think, you know, conceptually, you would think that the new piece of MBTA rule and regulations would say the same thing. We're not going to give you credit for it because it's just an exercise on paper. It doesn't do that. It actually says you can now take credit for areas that are already developed and it doesn't speak to that. So in essence, um, this goes to a question that's come up a couple of times, hopefully I'm getting it there, 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 but, um, and correctly, I'm wrong. But it is worth noting, um, folks have asked, you know, uh, for instance, you know, we, part of the analysis here is sort of where do we need to make up more credit outside of the forty R district? And most people that I've talked to would generally agree, why would we not take credit for the smart growth district? Why would we modify, you know, why would we not take credit for that and consider possible buyer, or tweaking that to, you know, address the state's concern? And I say that in part because, um, it also goes to what areas of the city do we give up some local control? So at any rate, um, well, I would say, just for the record, that I do think creating housing and specifically affordable housing is a, um, per, a very important purpose that we should be trying to do here regardless of any of the state mandate. Having said that, um, people have asked, you know, where do we start from and what do we get out of smart growth district? And then that informs the question of how much more zoning elsewhere do we need to do to make up for the state mandate? So I haven't gone to the slide yet that shows you the number of units of the area required by the state, because there are some parameters that also show that. But the, and the sum that I just wanted to get to here was, and hopefully this is getting over what you wanted. Um, this is sixty five Parker Street, so this is one lot right here that I'm calling out. And, um, and there is another, just calling out here, for instance, you know, I can serve it, no, actually, it's not one for you to show here. But, um, the important part, I guess, is that this is from the, uh, table that we had to give the state, and so you might not be able to read the size here, but this is sixty five Parker Street. And what I'm highlighting here is just be looking about four acres or so just under, um, for that area. And the state was giving us zero credits for units in that area. However, uh, if you go back to the regulations, so while under the forty R program, our total credit under that program was four hundred and, five hundred and forty units, basically. Here, I would suppose we get, and we should be somebody to date, another hundred and fifty six units we get credit for within the existing forty R without modifying. And there's other things that might be tweaked, but without modifying anything there, we can, under the MBTA communities program, utilize the existing smart growth district and yet not only five hundred and forty units of credit, but more than that because of the credit we can get from a lot like that. So that's just to illustrate sort of.
So that that gets to my question, and I guess the, what I would think would be very important would be is soon to confirm.
Yes.
But there is not, not, not estimating that that we're going to get it, but to get a sign off from E O H L C. Um, that they agree that was a hundred and something units there. Well, because, because if we don't have that, we could go ahead and say, oh, we're fine, we can get it all in the forty R district. And then come December, they'll say, no, yeah.
Yes, uh, that's, that's a very valid point. I will, I will tell you also, and this is, uh, I I fully appreciate that the staff is there probably overwhelmed like we are. But, um, just by example, trying to get feedback from folks at the state. Um, and for example, this is their portal. You send an email to this address, when I got back was, uh, an email saying, we modified our address, please make note of the new address, we're going to forward on to that. Never, having gotten a response yet to the inquiry, and it says, it was a question along some similar lines about modifying the forty R, et cetera. And we could go through, we could, you know, spend this time with specific staff, but they're overwhelmed, I'm sure, right now, living, it's going on. This email that came back to me did not actually have a coherent email address in it. So it was saying, make a note of the address, so I'm just pointing out here that this is.
But, but still.
So my, my point is just that we're going to try to get as much feedback as we can from their staff informally, but they also have a formal process for submission. And I know that the way that they typically work is you could try as much as you want to get a formal feedback, but they might still reserve the formal until they've had the full analysis, they've gone through all that. So my point is just that I will make every effort to try to get the confirmation, but we will not really know until the end of the day when they done.
But I think this is, but this is an issue that's going to come up not just for Newburyport, for your communities all over the MBTA district. So we should be able, it's kind of a basic question, I'd say. If something is not countable under forty R, can it be countable for capacity under the.
No, I mean, that part is very clear here. This, for instance, the substantially developed land piece that I'm pointing out here and the differential that we get, wherever you want to get more credit, so to speak, you know, under MBTA, that's pretty clear. That, that, I mean, I don't think that that needs to be, I mean, we can submit, you know, this and that, but that's pretty clear from the guidelines. Um, there's not, you know, a question about that piece. And that's why I say, when people have said to me, you know, can we confirm that it's five hundred and forty units we get credit for? I actually want them to know that our, my intention is to come back in a week or so and say, I think we're actually should be getting this out of the district. Well, that's what we love doing to get confirmation. And then we're having a discussion about from there, and this is what the sort of exercises for us a little bit is, do we want to modify and expand or tweak off of that district and try to grandfather certain provisions and things around the train station area? Or do we want to take credit and search other areas or a combination of those two things together? And one thing that, um, recognized something to do in sketch some time ago, um, which I did incorporate into my presentation, um, just to illustrate the issue was, um, and then again, I I have to use the term, it's like, I can't think of it and sort of describe it immediately, but gerrymandered district essentially to say, in essence, uh, we can meet, we can do the act, you know, the academic exercise and satisfy your requirements. This, this map shows in essence, we're going to grab things that, you know, uh, certain developments are already done. We're going to take credit for those areas, even though the state might say, we might say, that's not likely to happen to change for any reason, or in the near term, perhaps at all. But we still get credit because we can count that area despite the fact that it's already substantially developed. Because that term is going to be taken into account under MBTA communities.
And when you say take credit, does that mean take credit for what could possibly be built there under the zoning? Or do you count the ones that are actually there?
Right. So even though, even though the 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 regulation of the statute is sort of pointing at, we need to create housing, we're going to create housing. The, the sort of confusing part about that is you can't actually produce some zoning under this that doesn't actually produce any housing and so comply.
Right.
So, uh, it goes to then the question of, yes, we could use certain areas for credit, but do we also want to then relinquish some state local control for the state? Because we don't know where things will be in the future, but this would be relinquishing some local control over future forever, right? Because it'd be limited by the, the frame of the statute now for density or allowance, right? Uh, as a right or in certainly unit, uh, per density, uh, per per acre. But, um, but we, we can take credit for things and do the mathematical exercises there. We've met it, it's on paper, we don't need to do anything, it's not going to change anything. But we also need to be aware that we are then, uh, giving the state some locally, some control over those areas of the city, so to speak. So it's a, it, there's a pros and cons, different ways of doing that. And I, again, I'm not saying that doing the paper exercise is the goal here. Um, I think there are other reasons for doing housing, changing Story Avenue, for instance, uh, or looking at this. But, but that is a key thing that we need to do. And I think that there is, because we have the option of doing two different areas, and I would say, it, I think it's important, I would say, to hear it too, but I I don't think it's as much of an issue for Newburyport as it is for other communities. Um, one significant reason for that is because we have the smart growth district already. So we made up a water ground with a unit count, air acreage required for the side of the district. So for instance, uh.
Right. That's what, I mean, that's what I was, I'm looking at, giving the size of the smart growth district. Why doesn't we do an overlay that includes that? Why doesn't that satisfy the requirement, given the, the density that's allowed?
Right, so.
Molding that out. It seems to be bigger than the number that we're required. Is that because of the areas you say this is not developable?
Well, let me just, uh, and I apologize, I didn't, again, just because of the slides, or maybe that'll answer some of your question. But, um, it, it, we don't currently, or we're not able to do that entirely right now. I am doing the exercise for to confirm some math, for the exact, you know, specificity and, you know, level covered with our calculation of forty R, because I'll maximize that. Um, then we're looking about potentially changes to that. But it's important that we understand here also that there are multiple requirements and each of them have to be met. So, um, it has to be multifamily as a right, has to be thirty five acres in size. So I pointed out here in the slide, again, for the council review, that this is just a reference point. There are things that are calculated a little differently, right? So I'm putting that aside for a second. But in essence, our smart growth district is sizable enough to meet that requirement, right? So we can sort of say, all right, we'll check that box, that's not an issue for Newburyport from the mandate side. But, um, then we get another requirement, so fifteen units an acre, oh, well, well over that with the smart growth district, so that's great. That also helps us because it helps us get to a higher unit count for the total unit count we have to create, which is the twelve ninety two.
When you say create though, it's only in, within zoning, not physically there, right?
Uh, yeah, so I, I, do you want to pause on that for a second? Because I saw I had two, I had two responses to that. One is that's true, it can be like, again, with it, for like a better term, gerrymandered map, you can do zoning that is just doing, you know, that and not producing a housing percent. Um, the. I'm trying to get that sort of frame this here, but the, the, the twelve ninety two units, we can get, um, you know, somebody like six hundred, seven hundred units, but they don't, well, I'm going to get somewhere in that area, four units in the smart growth district, uh, of, with a calculation according to MBTA communities, right? So putting aside the forty R means what we get out of that district. But we're only going to get like that range of total build out credit in the smart growth district because you're multiplying the four unit breaker or in the smaller case, the thirty unit breaker, there's a few.
Right.
densities. So you're going to max out and you reach that threshold, it's never going to get to basically what we have in that district. We're never going to get to twelve ninety two. So our issue is getting to where are the other units going to come from? Not so much where is the acreage coming from, um, if if you get my drift.
I'm not sure because, I mean, we have the acreage, if you do the, if you do them, multiply out the forty units per acre in the two sections, you're well over the twelve ninety two.
If you don't count, the thing is you don't count all of the land, and that, so thirty five acres is the size of your district. But the way our forty R zoning is with, is forty units, correctly, if I'm wrong, is forty units per acre of the lot. And the gross density includes the street bases and the.
Yeah, and don't let you count, uh, in our MBTA communities, they'll still say, well, we're not going to consider wetlands or roadways, you know, we're not going to do. So I'm sorry to get to that, but they're not going to give you credit for roadways and wetlands because they know that's not going to happen. So that's more of equivalent to the substantially developed piece. So while they didn't take into account substantially developed in terms of manmade improvements, they did take into account, like, you can't, you know, do the mathematical exercise to get credit and wetlands and roadways that nobody knows about, could be due.
And so, so even though our zoning in one sub-district says we're allowing forty units per acre for MBTA communities purposes, we're not allowing forty units per acre because we're, the denominator is much bigger. You know, because we're adding streets, for example, because the scroll hasn't.
Of the MB.
For the MBTA.
Oh, right. Yes, yeah.
You might be, you might be allowing thirty five units per acre or something like that.
Yeah.
In the forty R district. So, you know, it doesn't, you can't just take the fifteen or the forty five.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I say, like, even though I tried to provide in the blue font a reference point for area, I, I, it's important to know that these are calculated differently, so they're not exactly, you know. What I'm saying here in essence is I don't think the area is our issue, right? The issue that we have is about the unit count and where does that come from? Our issue will not be making up the acreage requirement, uh, per se. And we already have, the smart growth district already allows multifamily as a right. And we have the grant, they actually specifically put in the guidelines, only grand, they usually use the term, I don't think, that grandfather smart growth district can can be kept essentially. And they did actually allow the department, this is the department rule, not the state legislature. Um, they did specifically say in there, they can also approve expansions of existing districts. And they did not take away, as far as that allowance, uh, the ability to maintain, say, the twenty five percent allowance, twenty five percent requirement for global housing. Um, this is where incidentally, we have, for instance, we all presume we're not unsurprisingly saying, you know, could I possibly reduce my, my twenty five percent to twenty percent, you know? I, I, and this is part of my concern is, you know, that the developer, development community is going to say, well, the state and the local communities, well, even the state officials are saying only ten percent affordable, twenty percent affordable. So now everybody's going to be one deal, saying, they're making the argument, you know? And and so I just, uh, that's the part that it is, it's sort of baffling to me about saying there's a hard stop at twenty and not even allowing, even if you have a really high density and you can make it economically viable, saying arbitrarily, we just can't be twenty five percent when we've already demonstrated it can be done in the smart code district. And while, uh, the forty B subsized housing inventory and safe harbor status isn't the primary driver, it is actually important to a degree like you were, for to maintain local control of zoning and know what's going to happen in the character of the community. So when you have a project that could come in, maybe they want to override your local zoning, you then lose some of that. You then lose some of that control with the context of what might be appropriate. So I, I don't have a problem with, you know, um, well, we got the house. Um, you know, the smart growth district made sense to me, uh, when I worked on that, but, um, but I just think, sort of, my question is more about just that hard stop. That having been said, I have no control over that, that's probably not gonna change. So we have to meet the requirement one way or another with the state.
I've, I've been really fascinated by the grain collar provisions since you mentioned it. First time, or since I first heard you talk about it a few months ago. I've been trying to understand it, because you can expand a forty R, but this sentence is really carefully written, and I don't know what it means. It could be.
Which party in particular?
It can be expanded, including, including any such existing district that is expanded or amended to comply with these guidelines, which implies. You can ex, you can expand a forty R district, but the new areas would be the lesser standard?
Uh, yeah, so this gets into, and this is, I, 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 again, I, I completely understand where the state's coming from and trying to. Progressing an issue, and I addressed it in my earlier slide, but I didn't cut it here, which is. The fact that local zoning is essentially part of the problem, trying to give that, I acknowledge that, not disputing that at all. But even because these are departmental guidelines and not coming from the state legislature, they're not in the statute. The department could modify or rethink different parameters and could reinterpret X, Y, or Z, right? So um, this is, if, what's the brick was getting at was, so while we've been having these informal conversations. The ability to get something in writing, you know, say, oh, we repeat your pack out, that's the harder part, I can just start dealing with state agencies, a lot of it's easy to get. Uh, but I can tell you with everything overwhelmed, with everything going on, that's gonna be hard to get as well. But um, but the, some result is, that could be interpreted potentially two ways.
Yeah.
One would think, and, and I'd actually expected to be some further pushback from communities with the whole rule component of this, um, you know, within the last year, uh, more than I've seen thus far. Um, but um, but in essence, the department could interpret that two different ways. It seems logical that they should give, uh, the, the broader interpretation of that, right? And again, we can all have that debate, we could talk about it, it's litigated, but. I think they'd be in a hard pressed position not to give a broad, a reasonable broad latitude back, given the way that the rest of that section is written. That says you can maintain an existing grandfather district, you know, including the percentage, you know, affordability. So um, yes, there'll be discussion to have about those pieces, but every conversation I have had with folks at the state or that, um. By the way, it's uh, some of the nonprofits, sort of portable housing advocacy groups have been involved with some of the, the discussion with the legislation, these legislative regulations. Um, all the conversations that I've had with folks, there's not been any question about our ability to maintain, say, the twenty-five percent, for instance, right? So um, or uh, the, you know, other aspects of it, there are very limited pieces we would have to modify from what we have gotten informally thus far.
Yeah.
In terms of the, the question you're asking.
Well, that's kind of my, my point, like, if we wanna protect the forty R district, maybe we shouldn't tinker with it, because we put it into that gray area. We start expanding it and making assumptions about what expansion means or this area. I mean, maybe you can get extra credit for areas that, I like that strategy, like, get credit for areas that comply with the MBTA but not forty R. That sounds real solid, but if you start like looking at a strategy that modifies the forty R, and potentially start putting it into this gray area where. What's gonna even count anymore, or what's the real affordable threshold, that really worries me.
Okay, but I'll be saying, I mean, we'd leave the forty R district as it is, when, when we say add to it for the MBTA. Just saying, because the MBTA is gonna be an overlay district?
Maybe should include a part of the.
Or an overlay.
Yeah, forty R plus any additional pieces.
So the forty R, forty R would essentially satisfy, would be, would be creating an MBTA district on top of the forty R. It'd be either.
As a compliance area.
Kind of client, totally.
As a, as a component of our compliance, yeah.
Roughly half of it.
Right, you wouldn't say.
Wow, in terms of units, perhaps we have this. But, and larger more than half in terms of area.
Right, so uh, well, again, we're not going to all that, it'll happen to kind of ladder or not, but you know, while you could sort of, again, for lack of a better term, sort of gerrymander a district or extend a district that adds three units, or just, you know, does it on paper. Up Route One, which is one option, you know, and we talked a little about that, uh, the primary meeting, um, last year, I think, but then. Um, you could also go on Parker Street and look into bubbling the district that way. Again, we're talking about whether we wanna do it here, do it there, you know, what, what sort of things we're going to help with.
But when you talk about adding, adding to it, given your comment earlier about developable land. Would, does it then, would it make sense to add parcels that are empty? Because there's not very many empty parcels. So because they're, otherwise they're not developable, unless we're saying that big business next to the train station.
Well, no, no, so for instance, if I, if I, again, so sixty-five Parker Street, this one triangle one.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, I don't think this is where I am, but this, this one right here.
Yes.
We got no credit under forty R, but we dread credit now under this program for this lot, even though it's already substantially developed. So if we were to expand the forty R district and go over Mark Ritchie's property and take credit there. We may not think anything's gonna happen there, you know, but, but we can get credit for all that acreage per whatever density we allow. We definitely be added to the unit capacity we're creating, just outside the state.
But what it's, same name just to the west a little bit as well, up there, sorry, not just.
Heading, heading west from the MBTA station outside the existing forty R boundary?
Yeah.
I mean, again, that's deva, already developed land, but if you're, we're looking for additional acreage to get credit or?
Well, so again, I mean, I think like, it's just a more, a similar one, perhaps, might be, there was debate about this Heinz Way, I think, not out here, but Heinz Way. There's probably not a real impact to the city, so to speak, if you're debating about, you know, only because it's basically already built, right? And if you debate permits and all that kind of in the past, but that is water on the bridge, and it's there. So in, in, in essence, if the concern is trying to get credit and satisfy the state, you know. You could easily draw a boundary around that and take credit by whoever units per acre you want to allow. You could say just fifteen units an acre, or you could go up to forty, and you know, you could, you know, stop where it's not gonna happen, right? So I guess the point is just that there are different ways of modifying this district and getting more credit. Or creating more meaningful units around the train station, which is another plausible, potentially plausible goal in itself.
They're really four, as I see it, four different things we should be thinking about. One is, one is um. Continue or getting close to or, or getting over the ten percent uh, uh, up that we, and, and making sure we stay over that sort of the. Protect ourselves from um, a forty B coverage and credit coming shots. So that's, that's one, this kind of a, a process kind of thing that keeps our, keeps us in control of our zoning. Another is what we've been talking about here, which is, well, let's just maximize our somewhat illusory. Housing development capacity, I mean, you can write it on the map, but doesn't mean it's ever gonna happen, so we're not gonna get anything. And the third thing would be um, providing, producing housing. Right, because there's a housing shortage, and that's a goal, and we should.
Right, and I wanna make it clear, and thank you, Jeff, remember, directing us back to this, because I, I, I wrote it away to clear. While I, I think it's very important that we be cognizant of the local community about the implications under the forty B statute and St. Harbor statute and whatnot. I am not at all suggesting that what we should be doing here is just to do a paper exercise. Or it's not important to create affordable, uh, housing or affordable housing. Nor am I suggesting there aren't also similar benefits in doing things up this, over Story Avenue, I happen to think that's an area we can improve for the city and for other reasons along these lines.
Well, then there was my fourth point, my fourth point is, for good planning.
Right, right, right.
But, but it seems, given that, um, we, we do wanna get over the hurdle of satisfying the MBTA requirement, so that we don't get sued like.
No, right, what's our timeframe, I meant to ask.
December thirty-first.
Right, so we're also.
Essentially, September nineteenth, which is the last city council.
Right, there's has to be voted on and approved, right?
Right, so I actually want a, I, this is, this will be my lens, but I would like in the next couple of weeks or months, for there to be really intensive discussion about these, these highly level pieces of. Where do we want the map to be? What areas do we want to be MBTA, uh, you know, where we sort of generally these broader pieces, because um. It'd be better to have a general sort of consensus agreement on that framework, and then drill down from there with the finer gray details. And that, and these are the higher level pieces, and this is one of the higher level pieces, is where is the map going to be? We get the finer gray details, and they do overlap a bit, the way I would describe it a bit for us, although I don't think it's this complicated for Newburyport here, but uh, in some other places, with, with the density and the insertion of it. But if you think of like a, a children's playground, and like have like a seesaw, like pull up a seesaw that has like eight seats on it. We're balancing between these different parameters and the context of Newburyport works. I don't think it's particularly problematic for Newburyport for various reasons, we're going to, but you sort of see illustrated briefly here. But at the end of the day, we still have to decide where we're going to take that credit and where we're gonna have certain densities and whatnot. Um, to break to earlier point, I think it's very important to recognize here, there are separate reasons for wanting to rezone Story Avenue, or all the baitos, and whatever, wanna do it and all that, but. I think there are benefits for the city entirely separate from MBTA communities, for updating the zoning in that area and including the potential for housing there. I think that changing the experience when you get off the highway and just feeling like you're arriving in Newburyport, it's never gonna be downtown. But feeling like you're arriving in Newburyport would be good if it's fifty years from now, then what we have now would just strip all anywhere. So this gets to a lot of other, you know, best practices in the playing, but, you know, putting all that aside. One of the options we have outside of the forty R district or some other areas of the city is to look at the Story Avenue area. And I see these things as, as, I've seen the timelines of these things, the, this is a potential um, optional, option and benefit for us to look at these two areas together. Because the city has greater variety of options, when we discussed the full variety of these two pieces together. And wherever we end up, we've done what we think is best for the city with the overall options considered.
So I, so I understand, uh, it sounds like a great idea to potentially embrace, uh, the, whatever you call it, the pot or area of Story Avenue. Is, is it uh, reasonable to think that that would be something that's achievable between now and December? And, and it's, so.
So what I'm thinking, if we wanna go in that direction, and I'm thinking from an efficiency point of view. Perhaps we should have some notion or ideas, because here's one option, there's another option, and then we can review this.
Yep.
And then get back to, because I feel like it's a little bit destroying the.
It, it is a little bit nebulous right now, right? And you need a little bit more um, specificity to some of these options, right? And so I think, and this is probably what we've been doing a little bit, is like, um, you know, they, they, some of the kind of like, didn't wanna take up this matter last year, we had a lot of, you know, learning matters, so like, we're, we're digging into it now. Um, we did have some brief discussion of it last year, but I think that um, we're first discussing the overlay, everybody gets a real idea of sort of the parameters and things you need to think about. And so I think the thinking is basically, a couple of weeks from now, to your exact point, we come back here, and we have, here's a schematic map that shows. You know, here's what our calculation would be for the forty R district, we think, and we've confirmed hopefully with the state, and see if we can get a firm thing you're writing for them, but. This is what they should give us as credit for the forty R district without any changes. Um, here's a variation or bubbling of that district, you know, in some way, whether it goes over one, or goes east or west, or both, some combination. Here's a couple of variations, like, there's a variation of that, and what that could do for the compliance piece of it. Uh, whether we like it or not, potentially that's the point to weigh in on, right? Uh, but that's an option, and then here's a Story Avenue area, and a couple of options with that. We play around with this area, or that area, or this portion of it. Cause I can, I can tell right now, we're not gonna need all of Story Avenue, at a fair minimum, we're not gonna need all of Story Avenue to meet MBTA, even if we, you know, are trying to get maximized in other areas, like the forty R. If we look to Story Avenue, we won't need all of it anyway to meet MBTA communities. But uh, it doesn't mean, in my view, that we wouldn't also consider changing zoning in that area for other beneficial reasons, or even comparable pieces or components of that. So uh, that's all beneficial, so I think if we can have.
I suspect we should be careful there, because if we're focused too much on it, well, I like that idea.
Yeah.
And if there's resistance, right? Then now, now we're going down a road that we need, we need to make a decision, right?
That's right.
So I, I love the idea of Story Avenue.
You worried about, are you concerned like the changes there?
Yeah, so maybe, because that's going to.
As long as we get the more specific it gets, and we're complicating this.
That's what I'm thinking, it's hard to explain, yeah.
And this is, with the short amount of times you have ahead of us.
And then maybe two is that, you know, I, 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 I love the idea of that area being, you know, which we develop the story of. But I just, I'm just thinking, I'm looking at the.
Yeah.
Right, the.
Just like considering that we're on a really tight rope.
Sure, yeah, just given the, the time deadlines for the MBTA district, that's why I was focusing in on that first.
Right, and so having the discussion about do we believe east or west here, you know, getting, getting to a number about what's the maximum we would be getting, again, this is just compliance, but. What would we be getting out of the smart growth district area? We have the baseline, but what the district provided already, but then we have, what do people feel comfortable with, and just like, well, for example. We might say, alright, we'll just expand the bubble and, you know, see what we get. But we have some people who, again, this is different opinions, some folks may say, and I've heard this. No residential going further west on Parker Street from where we are today. So, and we have other people who say, yeah, let's consider that possibility, we'll see where the, you know, like, we have to debate about where the line drawn, we can discuss for a little time, but we're not, we're open to that idea as a way of. Satisfying the state mandate around the train station and building up the forty R smart growth district. So that's something we have to explore a little more, because there might be different opinions about how far will people are willing to go around here. I think in the context of these discussions, we might see more willingness or flexibility to do that here in essence. Um, but we've also seen in the past, for instance, um, with the business park, there might have been concerns expressed, and I think this might have been diminished uh, in recent years, but. Concerned by other uses being added to the business park or transitions and whatnot. I don't think that's as much of an issue or concern today, or will be, you know, here necessarily as what passed years ago. Um, but it is a valid consideration, whether it's at the policy level or for the business park, you know, most, um, that might come up. So the varying opinions about this may, you know, vary where we fall with this expansion of the district. But I would also generally agree that we should try to do what we can for the credit side of it around or with forty R smart growth district. And then only look elsewhere, you know, for instance, to be in the most logical places, Story Avenue, Low Street, but somewhere in that area. But to um, to, to then only have to do in that area the minimum required for the state there, doesn't mean I would want to change zoning for other reasons, rather than other ways, but. I, I just think that we would minimize the other areas of the city to some of the discussions that we would get.
So I, I'm looking at, I, given a minimum fifteen units per acre, um, that we're required to have.
Right.
Um, and even assuming that we don't get anything more out of the forty R district. I, I think we only need twenty-five acres, and I think we could easily.
Right.
On Low Street, which is the Low Street, sit front.
Just this area here.
So I would, I would, just in order not to have a lot of uncertainties hanging out there, I would like us to move forward. Looking at that, that area that came out of the Hodges, and just that, the, the west shops, that kind of area there.
Yeah.
As a, as something that we agree to move forward with regardless. And then over on the forty R section, I think we should be prepared to give the city council a venue, because. I don't wanna give them a single package and say, take it or leave it. I think we should say, here's our forty R. What about moving west a little bit on Parker? What about moving up to the rail trail to get to Enroe? What about moving east on Parker to pick up the Heinz Way? And then, you know, if we get some controversy, as long as we've got the buffer in terms of Low Street. If we have, if we have some controversy, but one or the others. The city council could say, no, let's just drop that piece, and we'll go to these three pieces instead. Cause that, that would be, I hate to get in the position of, you know, getting to a, a tight deadline. And all of a sudden having the city council say, why did you give this package to us? You know, there's pieces that we really don't like.
I wholeheartedly agree, and that's part of the reason why I appreciate the planning development, um, you know, members of chair, you know, and it was actually, this matter is maybe the whole, so my attention, my hope was that. Uh, as much as possible, all councils would attend and be able to just pay and give, you know, feedback, so. Um, I appreciate them devoting time to that, you know, the regular business, so that we can do, because I think I agree to wholeheartedly. What I, I think we need to do is a couple of iterations of these things collectively, and sort of bounce the ideas back and forth, right? And coming, honing in on, exactly what Rick's saying, honing in on what we feel comfortable with, because we have variations of this, you could do frankly, millions of variations of this. But in the, in the end, they're all coming down to some basics, sort of, you know, where we feel comfortable doing it. And by running through on the map, a couple of those scenarios, you know, it's basically a common voted overlay on top of this. You know, where do we do those, what does that provide for us? And then sort of running, and basically having that table running against the maps that people feel either comfortable with or not. We're basically gonna hone in on, I think, relatively straightforward, and think on what we feel comfortable with, you know, over there.
Um, are there public hearings for this as well?
Yes, because plans is, is on change, yeah.
Yeah, the public hearings is just.
Yeah, there will be formal hearings, um, so my, my plan is to try to, I have to touch base with other, and I have dates and things like that, but I'd like to do a, at least one public informational session, I'll possibly do. Um, and um, um, we have planned the voting with the city council, as there's one, be able to provide more public input, and to make sure the councils are, you know, routinely being involved. Uh, we have a working group, we have, so obviously there's different consultant pieces in the regional planning, just each of those different pieces of this that you're gonna run in here. Some of it is mapping, some of it's illustrations of what the three D mapping of the area might look like. Um, some of it's getting to, um, I didn't talk about it at length here, but the whole affordable for, um, requirements, and um, there has to be. In order to go from ten percent higher up to twenty, as I mentioned earlier, you can only go up to twenty. But to go from ten percent higher somewhere towards twenty, we have to provide an economic feasibility analysis or EFA to the state. And this report, which every community down the area has to do, is to demonstrate that it will be enough density on that area to justify whatever percentage of affordable housing you're requiring. Um, and so in essence, there'll be different pieces that's coming in here, that's more typical in nature, what that's gonna basically flag in the end of the day is. Is, are we allowing enough density in a certain area to justify the affordable percentage we're, we're requiring, right? That's what it's getting at, the state, um, uh, in essence, but um. But I think the more important thing for us is recognizing that's a parameter and a constraint we have with the, with the statute and the regulations. We have to decide what we feel comfortable with and what we want to aim for, and then we can, with the constraints of MBTA communities, these other statutes. We can then develop something appropriately, but I think one of the primary things for us is that mapping question, where do we want to do this? Type of multifamily allowance as a right. Um, recognizing there can still be a design reprocess like the forty R smart growth district, because we have some of. Um recognizing there can still be a design reprocess like the four yard smart district, because we have some ability to look at the, you know, design of the building, the way that the sites lay out, all these different things like in the smart district, things like that. Um but where do we feel comfortable allowing that multifamily housing? And then we have some debate about what densities are. Is it forty units an acre? Or is it thirty? Is it in some ways a fifteen or something else? But where do we feel comfortable with that? And I think once we've got some sense of making sense of that, a lot of the other things had to, I think, here in context will sort of be spider gray details for us.
How many units in each of those buildings?
Sorry.
How how many units in each of like one box away, two boxes, just to give an idea of.
Sorry, I forgot to tell my head. I think it's seventy six and one box away, eighty four and three box away and ninety six, I believe in the aliens unbuilt areas project.
And two thousand dollars is considered affordable?
Uh well, so again, this.
I'm seeing that.
This is how it's all defined here. So I I I put these two slides together. Um one, I wanted to with some basic data, just kind of illustrate. Um even when we talk about quote affordable housing, um I again, I agree, I have my own perspective, but. I I one of the the things that I was trying to illustrate in the discussion with the council briefly was just that. If the intention of this legislation is to address housing, right, or is it addressed, we address affordable housing, right? Because there's two different, you know, and that's why I pointed out really on this slide of the presentation, but. Um you could say we're creating housing and we're streamlining housing here, but it's not specifically directly addressing affordable housing. There's probably a presumption here, right, in the state that if we saturate the market with market rate units, that the competition between those might create some more affordability in the housing. I'm not necessarily convinced that's going to pan out that way. Um or at least not substantially. It might have a, you know, that usable, my view, sort of impact on that because there's always that competition and people are always saying, is I think, oh, right? So so I think it it, I don't know what's realistic to assume that that kind of that competition will do it. So and that's why it's worthy to note that is this legislation specifically pointing at you have to have a percentage of affordable housing units? Or is it saying you have to allow as of right? And then it has a certain parameters about what you can do by affordable housing. And in here, given that it actually caps it as opposed to saying. You can do twenty here, go up to thirty, it said to cap it. It seems in some ways, and this is, I know difficult for some of the folks at the state level, you know, the policy department, but. It seems counterintuitive in some ways. Some of these pieces seem counterintuitive because they seem to sort of contradict each other, right? Want to create housing, why allow an exercise where you can do something on paper but not actually create any units? Um if we care about affordable housing, that's the goal and, you know, it's been said here that the goal is great album. But if the issue that we all keep talking about is affordable housing, is this really creating affordable housing? The assumption here is that the private sector will create that by competition that will trickle down. You know, so trickle down economics will come down to everybody else by the saturation of our market rate units. And and it's, I'm not necessarily convinced of that, which is one reason why I'm disappointed that the state has put a cap at twenty percent and not allow us to keep at a twenty five percent ratio for instance, so. Um and again, just that's to your your comment. I mean, whether or not we think these numbers are affordable, these are the thresholds and you'll know that for eighty percent of the area, hey, come. Bingo is doing that um same number, that same, you know, amount for the rent of three blocks away, right? So um so those are, these are just illustrating what the actual prices are, what the numbers mean, you know, on that person when we talk about this.
In terms of ex- extending the forty yard district, right now we've got forty unit per acre sub district and thirty unit per acre sub district. But forty R would also allow twenty unit per acre. So if we extend our our district, are we bound by the two density sub districts that we have right now?
There's nothing in the regulations that says we have to, for instance, we could extend this district as long as there's still about a fifteen unit per acre, right?
Yeah.
And we're still within the confines of of four yard, which we'd be able to divide.
Yeah.
We would be able to extend this district and according to their guidelines, they assess back to that, like, are they going to interpret their guidelines fairly here, you know, according to the way they're written? Um we could do still twenty five percent technically.
At twenty.
At twenty per acre. Um I will note, um and this is, uh they perhaps worthy of noting, but um. Because of this legislation, I think in particular, not surprisingly, we have developers who say like, hey, you know, we, you know, potentially modify ratios. Um if 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 we were to sort of tweak that, I mean, keep in mind that there is actually a path to be aware, there is actually a path in the smart growth district right now. Um and this is because the state mandated at the time when we did the ordinance. Um while it says you have to have twenty five percent, they required us to have a release file saying that if the board was persuaded that it wasn't economically feasible. Which is getting the same thing the state's talking about the MBTA communities, but wasn't quite as hard as this this current grid of predicament. Um but it said, there was a release file by which the developer could come in and say, you know, I don't think this project is feasible at the twenty five percent now. I I think you've seen here, it's viable and we could debate pandemic versus post pandemic market, but um I don't buy that it can't be, you know, it isn't feasible to continue doing the twenty five percent for instance. So at any rate, I just point out here that, you know, these are deserved evolution and state, you know, process, we're going to get to different things, different ways. Um some overlapping in different tools, but in essence, um these are some decisions we'll have to make here and um it is worthy of noting just how they sort of relate to each other.
What are the resources the city has to explore, you know, chunks of the city? You know, this density, that density, okay, let's add these three blocks. Like, is this something that can happen in? I wouldn't suggest you have a meeting, a public meeting where you're just doing this real time. That would be chaotic.
Right, right.
Like, are you going to have to like go back to a consultant and get back to it in several weeks? Or is this something you can turn around in a few days?
Yeah, so in essence, this is part of the, like, the idea is to have, like, you have, you might have like ten or fifteen, and they're boiling down, you know, some some diversion, like. I don't think it's realistic to have a just kind of like a real, you know, this guy could like twenty different versions, right? You know, so. Um but if you have a variation of enough of them, and yes, we would be able to generically. Um with some general assumptions seeing on the maps or where the estimated wetlands are, for instance. We could basically look at the overall acreage of say, you know, like Mark Rogers partial here with the the perimeter, right? Look at the acreage, you see there's not a lot of wetlands in there generally, then we'd be like, all right, so um most of that being upland, developable area per se, not an area that would be discredited by the state. Um we could get credit for that. We could say basically, here's the acreage of that area, GIS helps to mean what that area is. Let's say there's not a lot of discount for wetlands. We could calculate all that area, add it immediately in there and say, add fifteen units an acre times those acres during a fly during the session, right, during our meeting. Let's modify that tweet just a little bit and say, what is this scenario that we've talked about, what was three, five, fifteen scenarios? Let's take a variation off of that and modify it slightly. It wouldn't give us our, to Rick's earlier point, a definitive report for the state. But it gives us a quick exercise off of a couple of variations to hone in on, you know, picking up on like maybe a primary or two, like sort of where we think we're heading. To make a tweet, like you're saying, on the fly a little bit. So. Something depending on how involved and complicated they are, might require going back a little bit. For instance, if we're trying to illustrate, you know, rendering, what a density look like, we have to have some sense of that and we might have to tweak sort of what the rendering look like. But from a quick build out exercise, we could do some of that on the fly, just to estimate what they would do to satisfy their requirements.
Isn't isn't um NVPC, Planing Commission, aren't they doing some of that with the state compliance tool and kind of outline districts and say just. What happens with this district if you zoned it fifteen units per acre?
That's correct. Uh and I just feel, and I one hundred percent that's correct. Um but I also would have a caveat, which is that, and obviously we're the ones here locally, we have to decide. So we have to give, and we could talk about scenarios, we have some additional perspective about these two stories are various, but in essence, we're going to have to provide feedback to them as we hone in on it. They're going to do some quick exercises with us, right? This, I I could personally don't need to, they go over some of the exercise myself, so I can verify myself. I can say I'm behind the data I'm presenting, but. Uh but they're going to be doing that exercise with us and helping us to show my compliance and to do the analysis, but. In essence, I think what we'll have is essentially this scenario that we produce with their help, where we put together some scenarios. And then off of that, we might do something to the fly, like, oh, what about this? What about that? And then we go back and if people are feeling comfortable going that direction. We hold in that direction and that becomes maybe, you know, in some way, there's sort of a primary there, sort of like, all right, this is one of the people we keep going back to, feel comfortable with. This is where we're landing, this is the density, these are the lots in the area we're including. And we're honing in on basically a bit from a couple of primary variations, we're honing in on that a little more in particular, bumping around a little bit. And then we're down to some finer grain details. We have to talk about like what the Parker requirements, and some other things that have to be discussed. But I think that the where is the primary piece and you have to do a little bit of that density quick map. To tweak a little bit off of the scenario that we might feel generally comfortable with or think about, but we want to tweak a little bit. We'll be able to do a little bit of that on the fly, just to get more magnitude adjustment to see what does that do? Does it get us across thresholds of?
Well, I was just thinking, like, if you're doing some of the large, some down story, yeah, then Low Street, that's not as hard. But if you're going up the rail trail, you're talking about a lot more small, like it's it's a lot. But but NVPC has a has some support for us to do some of its calculations.
Right, right.
Like, because this could be iterative, right?
And they're doing it for so many decades already, they're just, they're iterative.
Right, right. Well.
And what we, I kind of the thing is that, you know, we're going to be. We're used to, in some sense, forty units per acre or so at the train station. So we know like that. Fifteen units per acre is what we need to comply. So somewhere in between there is where we're going to end up. Probably not forty acres, twenty units per acre everywhere, but maybe there's some places where we'd work and some places where it wouldn't. And what we've talked about a little bit is um, you know, setting the zoning at fifteen units per acre. The density bonuses for especially things like density bonuses for more affordability, density bonuses for mixed use or something like that. So so it gets to a um. That will be, will be trying to zone in order to at least comply. But with the idea that we might be doing better.
Yeah.
I've just, I've been listening to all of this and I I. I'm struggling with the numbers, the ratios of fifteen units per acre and the twenty units per acre, twenty five, because I. I I would tend to start with what Rick said a few minutes ago, which is good planning. You know, what? What is the good planning solution for story? What is the good planning solution for Parker Street? Uh and and understanding those pieces, one, once you have a sense of where you want things to happen.
Yeah.
And what the nature of that housing might be. Then I think you can start to apply the math to it and and see how you need to kind of play with these pieces. But for me, wi- without understanding that basis, I don't know, I don't know where to start. It becomes very arbitrary. So I think I think you've got to start with what's the right planning solution for the city. And and then start to fine tune from there.
Yes.
The nature of the housing and the business.
I one hundred percent agree. I think that we could be doing this from a comprehensive planning perspective. We have to be aware of these variables, that's like any kind of oversplit ground here, right? But for the other day, one hundred percent, you're too good for comprehensive planning reasons, and we should first determine what we want there to be like fifty, a hundred years down the road, right, as a result. What do we want it to be? And then how does that align with any of this? One hundred percent agree with it. It should not be just, just because we have to do a mandate or just because of. Yeah, I understand.
You know, uh a lot of this is going to be conveyed in images, right? Were you successful in getting a grass program to do some visioning type stuff or no?
Uh so we're still in discussion of them actually, uh about, we're not exactly sure which of the deliverables, whether there'd be multiples or one or the other, then we're going to get to them. So. Uh I I mentioned before, we talked about the economic feasibility analysis, whether or not there's additional sort of input from them on that piece of it. Um which goes to make the argument, you know, as much in addition with the state to demonstrate that we've got, you know, that's used to support, if we're allowing mandate requirements. Um and um free modeling, rendering, um still a possibility as well. We're having more discussion that's coming in. I'll be able to confirm what they're working on. Um but they were sort of still playing around with the different options, but um but uh, I know we talked about before, it might be the great first element is. We were talking about the illustrious examples of, you know, it could be around the region, could be around the country, could be around the world, but. Buildings, uh projects, things that seem like they're aligning with these discussions, right? Um the density you'd like, what it's huge, where it's multi-family, anything along these lines. You have a luster of examples, I've got like a collection, right, Rick, I'm sure you got a collection. Bringing those together actually be a great part of the discussion here. Um it can help to inform the illustrations that we're going to use to help illustrate what story avenue principles could be. We can do the same thing for yard, but a lot of that sort of zoning is already there, so it's not much work to do to kind of illustrate that, but um it's a building built, but um but. To illustrate, I think, for the average person, what does it mean? I think that's really beneficial for all of us to, with our research sort of bring together, what we think are the best sort of illustrations, the the, you know, that bike. You know, as I said, Rick had some of these samples to show, you know, not necessarily what we'd see in Story Avenue, but what does the density look like at fifteen units an acre? Because we can see a three box away, what, you know, forty units an acre. Um this is actually, uh this is one box away. This actually uh was slightly reduced in size, never thought of, uh that one, sort of wood product, but. If this is, you know, so you're thirty to forty units an acre, this is your forty an acre here, so um. We have variations, but having those illustrations, I think are really helpful to reach the policy, even grievance of some type. And also to illustrate to the general public what we're actually talking about, because some of this is a number and the language, the survey is not really. You know, as the judge will buy, that's the person that you deal with all the time, and it's fair, this to them, they should be able to kind of see what it's really gonna mean potentially. So, you know, maps, illustrate areas, um. Uh you know, that's some visualization to see, you know, if we're a screwed building that I couldn't say. You know, the, let's say down on Low Street where you're looking at the Kmart, like if that wasn't, you're like looking at a parking lot, you're looking at buildings and then the party's behind it. What does that look like? Well, the illustrations would not show what that looks like, even real world projects that'd be that, whether it's here or elsewhere, you know, it'll bring that it look like.
What's going to be the next forum for that set happen?
Uh for which piece of it? I have for people to come with ideas and workshop it and discuss. Um well, for for this body, I would say, I mean, I've certainly had every meeting, I like, so we can discuss it in a hallway, but I would love to invent this. Maybe if you had, for instance, like a slide deck you wanted to run through. And I'm happy to kind of create like a repository, so I speak of the visualization, so we can kind of use these to add them to the pieces that we're using in different products, but. Um but to walk through those would be fantastic and just to get feedback about what you like, what you don't like, what do we feel comfortable having, you know, sort of to deem that thing down there. What would that feel like to you? Would you like that? Would you like that? Whether it's height, you know, uh requirements for affordable uses, you know, like, like Rick mentioned, you know. Using the character sticker program to be given incentive to keep, you know, commercial on the first floor, at your level or incentive to have. Or affordability, you know, I think that'd be a lot more unit per acre. Um but having those illustrations, I think, would be really great uh for all the discussion, because it provides a tangible thing that, you know. Yeah, of course, you're going to, you know, especially when it's a little hard to kind of conceptualize this stuff. But if you have visualization of what a building at that unit per acre looks like and what it could look like with proper designer view, you know, that I think is really helpful. I have a collection, you know, but um, you know, I I we would take days to go through them, I'm sure like all of it, but but to pick out and walk through some of those, I think would be really helpful. So I know you played here. I know Rick and I have already talked about, you know.
To scramble it up, James, come on in. I I think I just, that's what you're asking too. I think we need some sort of timelines as to what we should be meeting for. You know, when we should be meeting, what what kind of goals are we trying to get to and to be able to beat these timelines in in a way that doesn't tax us so much. That we're not achieving the goal, because if I understand this correctly, we're trying to uh keep the spirit of the city of Newburyport intact. Within about a nine month period, change zoning to accommodate that with respect to all the density and everything else. So. I think we need to be very clear on what we need to uh, you know, what benchmarks we need to meet. Uh in order to achieve this goal, otherwise I think it's going to fall apart.
I think, I think I actually should have talked about this. And and I think the other thing that that, I'm not sure you've mentioned yet, is this, the idea of the zoning advisory group is.
Yeah.
Also needed. So but the the thing that even though it says December sixteen. There's a a ninety day period within which the state gets to review what we're talking about. So if we if we back out on December sixteen, first reading by the city council, November twenty fifth. Then we've got a planning board, a planning development hearing and meetings, formal submission to the council in October. Um that really means that we have to be done with at least a pretty clear concept of where we are by June thirty. So it's it's tighter than the nine months you're talking about. It's scary.
Oh, well, Andy's done such a good job getting us teed up.
Well, and 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 I, this is not even my point, I I appreciate Jared being here this evening. I just would reflect something that he had said at the council meeting, which is. Well, there is a lot to do here, so to speak, right? There is a lot that we need to do. I think in the context of the landscape that we have here and the zoning that we have and the state mandate, it is not quite as problematic for Newburyport and to satisfy the state in a way that is. That's like a sort of not problematic for the city. Um so while we, while we do have to make some choices in here, um if there are folks who are feeling anxiety, you know, again, I know, I can't beat the Milton's, you know, specific situation that often different considers your variations and so forth, but. It has to be very different, I think, if Newburyport had to insert this type of thing, say, in the national register of story district area around downtown, very different discussion about that. Um we have areas where I think this is largely, in my view, aligned with that potentially beneficial changes for the city. And hopefully folks will sort of gather after you go through a lot of these exercises and not see that the build out that's part about the state, because really what we're talking about is how many units, that's where we're going to focus a little bit. I don't think it's necessarily problematic or necessarily quote hard for us to do that. We do have to come to a agreement on where we want, how we want to do it, but we have plenty, in my view, options. We do have to come to the agreement on where we want, how we want to do it, but we have plenty, in my view, options of how to do that without creating. Chaos across a landscape or drastically different landing patterns, in my view, other than improvements. So I I guess, I just, I think that's worth noting is that, in my view, that I don't think it's as, as problematic for the city of Newburyport to comply. And to do it in a way, I I I do sense there's a lot of commonality to folks saying, let's work at the forty yard district, obviously. But let's also, we're in a lot of commonality, I've heard you today, let's focus on potential qualifications, you know, adjustments to the forty yard. It's not going to be in depth in any direction, but folks who are interested in seeing what we can get from our credit perspective, from the MBTA compliance perspective over there. I don't think that at all diminishes Story Avenue, uh, changes for other reasons, but it it illustrates the fact that. We have options and it isn't, you know, a crazy amount of adjustment to the zoning or development patterns of Newburyport. To comply with this, uh, mandate. We, uh, we covered a lot of.
Yeah.
Cover everything you wanted to. Uh, I mean, so, planning getting more information from us, and, you know, we'll sort of point in between the forums a little bit, but. Um, we're going to get into more of these, these exact sort of map illustrations of, well, we included this area to produce this. We're going to see more of that, like, as you said, in our upcoming meetings, we're going to be walking through some of those things, like, if we include this area, it will produce this. You know, do we feel comfortable with that or not, what about a variation like this, right, so we're going to do more specific of that mapping, but. We're just kind of conceptualizing a little bit here of what's happening, which is to modify off of the forty yard, I think, I haven't heard anybody who said, don't use the forty yard, kind of keep most of those there. Um, you know, including, well, we talked about, you know, things like affordability, right, all, they modify that and go down. I haven't heard anybody who's said, let's do that, uh, and it's not as simple, I would recommend, but, but. Um, I think most everybody said, let's start with that, and I think the first exercise was to see, what is that, some adjustment there, and what is the, um, sort of, to Rick's exact point. We have to consider the possibility of option of Story Avenue, and Low Street, but a couple of there, uh, but I'm, I'm generally sort of considering, uh, some of that, that subsection. Um, but we didn't have to land on, sort of, you know, between those speculative options, we're going to hone in, I think, on a little generally, so we can see what we're comfortable with, and then the finer pieces kind of put in place from there. But we have to establish the area to feel comfortable doing this, you know, state piece of that, in fact, that they do.
Thank you.
Do you have thoughts before we? Call them, do we have any other updates at all, for?
Uh, sorry, my mind's full of MBTA, sorry, yeah, it's all my side.
Well, in that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll hope to adjourn, if I can, okay.
Second.
Second.
Final, uh, roll call of the, 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 yes, Charles, yes, Charles, yes, Jen, yeah. And Brian Walker.
Yes.